Robert Niamaya? Oh, what's up? Was that but your name, your last name?
No, actually, no, sir. If you don't mind, I'd like to go first because General Pietrowski is part of a group that I represent, if that's permissible.
What's your name, please?
Ed Anderson.
Okay.
Mr. President, members of the council, good afternoon. Thank you all very much for the opportunity to speak to you. We are speaking in support of the ban on the sale of recreational marijuana in the city of Colorado Springs. I am joined by five of my colleagues. Collectively, the six of us represent 206 years of service in the military in a variety of assignments, in a variety of command positions, in a variety of locations. One of the reasons why we chose to volunteer to come speak to you was the fact that we, as we have looked at the issues or the discussion of this issue, we never saw the word "military" mentioned once. And we were pretty concerned because recreational marijuana certainly has an impact on the military and certainly Colorado Springs has a great deal of military here in the community, as you all know. And so we felt it would be appropriate that we should speak on behalf of the military. Obviously, active-duty officers cannot speak. So we are representing them, as well as our own experiences and as well as our responsibilities as parents. Each of us, the six who are here, will speak to a separate issue associated with this. My first issue to talk to you about is, as you well know, the leadership of the Department of Defense, the leadership of the military, and the entire institution of the military is currently addressing a very serious issue within the military, and that is sexual assault. But, and I'm going to relate this to what we're talking about here at the moment, this is not just a military issue, it is a society issue. And it is consuming a considerable amount of attention on the part of the leadership and on the part of the military to try to correct this situation. Our concern is that the use of marijuana is also, could also, be a societal issue, which could bleed over into the military and would significantly challenge and strain the leadership responsibilities of those who are trying to focus on defending this great nation. And so we are concerned as to the consequences of the availability of recreational marijuana here in the city. We realize, we're not talking about banning its use, illegal smoking of it, we recognize Amendment 64 has been passed and the people of Colorado have spoken, but we do believe that we should ban it here in this community. I can tell you for a fact, I have spoken to a multitude of military leaders in this community, and their comment is, we must ban the sale here in the city. What I'd like to do, if I may, may I call the other five witnesses forward, please? And the first one I'd like to call is Major General Fortner, U.S. Air Force retired. He and I are discussing a similar issue. I want to stay up to the panel.
Thank you. Please come ahead and say your name and question.
I'm Larry Fortner, as he said, Major General retired. I retired in '92 here in the city. Since I retired, I've been working BRAC issues. I think most of you are probably familiar with that term since you've lived here, but BRAC is Base Closure and Realignment Commission. That commission has been focused on us several times. In 1995, we went through a BRAC, and in 2005, we went through a BRAC, the last one. Congress has to authorize a BRAC, and so we don't think that we're going to have another BRAC for another couple of years. We're looking 2015, 2017 for another possible BRAC. Community support in past BRACs has always been a consideration for whether they close or whether they move other units into this area. And I think that going forward, community support will always be a part of what we look at. Community support in this town and in this state has, during my time here for almost 20 years, has always been great. But with the state passing 64, the commanders and all of our military are concerned about the effects on their people and their installations of Amendment 64. If the city and the county banned the sale, then we wouldn't have the same thing that we have throughout the rest of the state. The soldiers, the airmen, would not be able to walk out the gate and get legal marijuana and then have to come back on and be subjected to the scrutiny that the military will have to put forward. So I urge you to ban the sale here in the city and make it easier for us to defend the closing of our military installations or to bring new installations into our area if we need to. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am involved with an organization called the Colorado National Offensive Support Council, which is looking at preparing Colorado for what we know is going to be a BRAC at some time in the future. And our responsibilities, among others, will be to protect the military installations that we currently have and the associated economic impact that that presents, but at the same time, to try to encourage those who may be affected by closures in other parts of the country. I'm sorry?
Well, let's let the other people go ahead and testify, so everybody gets their question.
Okay, sir. So that's it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, you have some other people you'd like to testify to?
Yes, sir. General Pietrowski will be next, followed by General Deluski, General Rayburn, General Clark. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, they can just make their question.
President Protan of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to make a few brief remarks. I've served in the Air Force both as an officer and enlisted for 38 years. And by living in the barracks as an enlisted troop for a number of years, I have a pretty good idea of what goes on at night in the troops there in the barracks and the things they talk about and think about. I've also had the privilege of serving as a commander of operational units for 16 years. One of those was overseas at Aviano, Italy, the rest of it were in the United States. And my experience with regard to marijuana is that where it's available and has easy access, there are many problems with good order and discipline. And as a commander, of course, I had to enforce the UCMJ, the Universal Code of Military Justice, and prosecute and separate a number of fine young men and women from the Air Force. It's easy to understand that our younger generation in the military, those 17, 18, 19, 20, are confused by the difference between local law and the federal law, UCMJ, and sometimes fall prey to the temptations. For example, at Aviano, where drugs were easily available on the civil market, I had to separate a lot of young men and women from the Air Force for violating federal law and using drugs. The same thing happened here in the United States, where I was a vice commander of base near New Orleans, and drugs were, of all kinds, were easily available and prevalent. And again, well, in that instance, it was so bad that we brought a special agent in, undercover, to find the drug users and the ring that was involved on the base, identify them, and that was our responsibility to prosecute them and separate them. That experience told me that members of the military, when separated with a less than honorable discharge, a general or a bad conduct discharge, can't find work, they tend to stay in the area of the base, especially if, like Colorado Springs or Biloxi, it's a favorable environment. The folks around Biloxi all became beach bummers and continue to be drug abusers in the local area. A few years ago, Mayor Mary Lou Makepeace made a public statement saying that we are now attracting large, high-tech industries to Colorado Springs. We no longer need the military. Fortunately, the military stayed, and the high-tech industries such as Intel, Command Sciences, and others left. There's still a lot of high-tech industry here, most of it's associated with support of the military, such as the Raytheon, Boeing, Lockheed, and the space support for Air Force Space Command.
Let's wrap up.
Yes, sir. I'm certainly, as a resident of Colorado Springs for 30 years, grateful that there's a large military presence here, and it is served to shield this community from the recent downturn in the economy started in 2008. So I urge the council to vote for a ban of sale of marijuana in the local area. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there was two other.
Thank you. Councilmembers, good afternoon and thanks for the opportunity to speak to this issue. My name is Gary Deluski. I'm a retired Air Force Major General. I spent 27 years on active duty, and during that time, I was a commander at the squadron or above level six times. So my focus is going to be on how a commander, an active-duty commander, might look at this issue and some of the other related problems. I think everyone who's ever had the opportunity to be a military commander would agree with the concept that if you take care of your people, they will take care of the mission. All of us who have served in that capacity have seen that in spades. And one of the ways that commanders protect their people is by protecting them, if you will, from environments that might otherwise not be good for them or their careers. And I think we have to remember that although these folks are great young Americans who come to the military and serve our country, they are young Americans who come and serve their country, and just because they put a uniform on does not mean they're not still subject to the same temptations that people who are of the same age as they are are subject to. And as one of the previous speakers mentioned, the temptation of marijuana in this area is going to be complicated significantly by the fact that there is disagreement among federal law, state law, county ordinance, potentially city ordinance, and of course the rules that exist inside any military gate. And that's especially true for not only our active-duty folks, but our guard and reserve folks who are very much members of our community on a day-to-day basis and occasionally put on the uniform. That's going to be a tough situation for a lot of those folks to be exposed to. We are also aware of the issue of alcohol versus marijuana and the argument about, well, if alcohol is legal and these folks can use it, why not marijuana? Our answer to that, I believe, is as simple as why would you want to double down on that problem? We all know as commanders, that as former commanders, that many of the discipline issues that are faced are led to and were complicated by alcohol abuse, and we don't think it's necessary to enter into that fight, another intoxicant that would create the same kinds of issues. I think you're also aware that the military is struggling because largely, we've been at war regularly, on a regular basis for many, many years, and many of our veterans are coming back with significant issues that they are dealing with. And I think you've all seen the recent articles in the Gazette that laid out much of that. One of the things we take from that is that very often, those issues are related to substance abuse. And in fact, the current VA statistics will tell you that over 20% of the returning veterans who are suffering from a PTSD kind of situation are also suffering from a substance abuse situation. And in fact, one of every 10 veterans that comes back is suffering from a substance abuse situation. Just to summarize, I would say that this is not only a military issue, this is very much a community issue. Colorado Springs is a special place with a special relationship with the military, and I don't think we need to put that at risk. Thank you very much.
President King, councilmembers, my name is Bentley Rayburn. I'm a retired Air Force Major General. And as a former commander, I can speak, I think, very clearly that local commanders are going to be very concerned about the local environment if marijuana is easily accessible, particularly with regard to its impact on good order and discipline. I acknowledge the fact that alcohol and marijuana are not the same, but I would just say, as an intoxicant, my experience in Saudi Arabia commanding a very large combat operation in the middle of the Arabian Desert over the course of a year and plus, was that because the Saudis did not allow us to have any alcohol, I, as a commander, had zero discipline problems the entire year. And I think it was the kind of situation that had, we had mixed in alcohol into this environment, it would have been disastrous with regard to good order and discipline. So again, I do not equate the two, but there are similarities we must consider. The other thing I would think that is important to remember and to think about is my experience with the Air Force Academy. Within the last little over a year or so, we had to remove a number of cadets and kick them out of the Air Force for using what were legal drugs in the civilian community but illegal in the Air Force, particularly spice and bath salts and things like this. And marijuana will fall into that exact same category, where it is legal outside the gate but continues to be illegal in the Air Force. And it's just one more challenge that our academy leadership, both with regard to cadets and their young airmen, are going to have to face. So I appreciate the opportunity to bring those to your attention.
Welcome.
President King, councilmembers, my name is Wes Clark. I'm also a retired Major General, like General Pietrowski. I served both in enlisted time and as an officer. I retired as the Vice Commander at Air Force Space Command. It was my opportunity this past weekend to speak to a couple of the commanders at Peterson Air Force Base. And it's disheartening to me to understand that there are still so many drug and alcohol abuse problems. And so the thing that, just adding to what my colleagues have said, is I would implore the council to think about this from a standpoint of facilitation. Certainly, it is a facilitation to make this so readily available in the local community. And I have the feeling that if Colorado Springs says no, and the surrounding communities say no, that it will greatly reduce the opportunities for these young men and women to have access to this recreational marijuana. So it is for that reason that I come forward, just to offer additional comments to what my colleagues have already offered, and would ask you to vote no on recreational marijuana in Colorado Springs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robert Niamanik?
Pronounced Niamanik. Thank you. City Councilman, President King. Short bit of background, I teach science and math, among other things. Previously, I was in business, in business at many levels, and even led the development of a multi-billion dollar division with venture-backed money, et cetera. Today, in the Gazette, there was a headline with a census that says that El Paso is in a decline, that it only attracted 770 people to move here in a year. And the demographic stated that, or the demographers from the Census Bureau said that it's because there's no jobs, there's little opportunity. St. Louis Federal Reserve states that we have fewer jobs now than we did a dozen years ago. I'm a numbers guy. That's what used to call me, business and everything else. And when there's fundamental problems and the numbers aren't adding up, that means that the decision process and the philosophies and presumptions are incorrect. That's what business is, that's why you add it up. So looking at all this, looking at your comments, looking at the drive to go against what the state voted 55%, say we want legalized marijuana, the city voted in a majority, you're going in conflict of what's going on. Now, I understand what the generals said here, but the majority is that only one-fifth of the marijuana users now in the state are licensed. That's a huge marketplace. It's not being taxed, not being regulated, not being run properly. It's going to continue to happen here in Colorado Springs. It goes on in schools, but not as much as you think. In fact, most marijuana use is not in the youth, it's in adults, even my age. So what you have here is a business development opportunity. The growth market is that the horror culture or the hyperponic development of marijuana has developed an entire industry of growing crops indoors. We are at a forefront right here, we can develop jobs, develop an economy, develop things going on. You know, we're going to have interstate congresses in marijuana. This is not going to end with Colorado and Washington State. It's going to go on in many other states. The feds know they're upside down on this. It's not Schedule I, a drug, it's an herbicide. It's an herb. So, sorry. So what you have here is you have an opportunity to develop jobs where we have a declining economy. The decisions you've been making have not worked out. It is not working out. 770 people moving here in a year is not a growth economy. You're not going to be able to support schools, not going to be able to support anything else. I thank you. Thank you.
I hope you respect my right to express speech. Good afternoon. It's an honor to testify here today. My name is Casey Stark. I served in the mayor's previous cannabis council and working together with the previous council. We developed the most responsible recreational or the medical marijuana business known in our nation. Few years ago, this honorable city council cast a vote in favor of liberty. That vote ended almost a century of medical cannabis prohibition. It wasn't easy. Many claimed the cannabis industry would destroy our city, it would turn our children into cannabis dominos. They claimed it would lower our home values, increase crime, ruin the local economy, and even cause the Air Force and the Army to leave Colorado Springs. Did that happen? No, it did not. Indeed, home values dropped over 6% on employment is down, and Colorado Springs has become the Silicon Valley of responsible cannabis cultivation in the United States. Today, over 80 centers, 80-year businesses call our city home. Up until 1937, cannabis was widely grown for both industrial and recreational uses in this great country. Indeed, George Washington is known to have grown it. In the 1880s, hundreds of hashish bars lined the East Coast and were visited by politicians well-to-do with the education elite. So what happened, America? Harry J. Anslinger happened, and the Federal Bureau of Narcotics. Dirty Harry left his job as Director of Prohibition to take charge of a new agency, and a campaign was launched to turn American cannabis into Mexican local weed and reefer madness. I will let Anslinger's words speak for themselves, and they sound much like what we hear today from some leaders. Quote number one, "There are marijuana smokers in the U.S., most are Negroes, Hispanics, Filipinos, and entertainments. You can tell them by their satanic music of jazz and swing." Quote two, "Reefer madness makes darkies think they're as good as white men." And this is the man who started the Federal Bureau of Narcotics and launched the war on him with those words. I continue, his words, not mine. In short, America soon became the fear of cannabis. Even the name was changed from cannabis to marijuana to simply tie closer to the xenophobic fears of Latin Americans fleeing Mexico to the United States after the Mexican Revolution. In 1937, the Marijuana Tax Act placed cannabis under the control of the federal government for the first time in our nation's history. Let's be clear, the majority of Americans in Colorado, in El Paso County, in Colorado Springs, in Manito, all voted in a democratic process to treat cannabis like alcohol, period. That is a founding principle of our nation. We, the people, own our destinies as declared clearly in the Declaration of Independence and the Bill of Rights. Recent statements today offend me as a military man. We all take offense to the Constitution, not fight with its hands.
Rest in peace, the council, please.
I apologize. Recent statements concern me greatly. Quote, "Young people who use this new grade of marijuana are at the risk of losing their memories for life." I'll let the mayor defend that himself. Indeed, some community leaders have suggested that democratic process is not enough. Some are not happy with the democratic process, some have suggested a ban, a moratorium. Some have even suggested a ban now and have voted later date. As an American and a veteran, I find this blasphemous to founding followers' principles. And I will quote John Adams, "Those who would sacrifice liberty for safety deserve neither." Posterity, you will never know how much it has cost our generation to preserve your freedom. I hope you will make good use of it, John Adams.
So what do you want to be, Mayor? How about Hillary?
Sally.
Yeah, Sally, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you for your counsel.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Well, I need to speak today. I'm a medical marijuana and spinster owner. The name of my business is Rock Mountain Miracles, because I believe that it is a miracle drug, if you want to call it a drug, we call it an herb ourselves. I'm here to appeal to a more, I guess, I can't think of the word, something a little more down-home, let's say, because every one of us has a person in our family who can benefit from the medical use of marijuana. And I'm not talking about having that there for our youth, such as 17 to 20-year-olds or younger. However, if we did research with this herb, we might even get rid of Ritalin in our elementary schools, because it is helpful to all of us. We need to realize that it's not a drug that is detrimental to people. It can help many. I see this because I'm shop owner, and I see that probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 80% of my patients are over the age of 40. And so we help people clear up into the 80s. I don't have a bunch of young kids that are all dopes and so on, but I have people with serious medical problems that are benefiting from the use of medical marijuana. So I thank you very much for your time. Now, we invite any of you to come, even the military men, to our shop and see the people that benefits from cannabis. Thank you very much.
Yeah, City Council, thank you for letting me have a few comments here today. My name is Joan, I'm with Conspire. I'm also part of the Drug and Alcohol Testing Industry Association, and I served on the Governor's Task Force Work Group for Banking, Taxation, and Civil Law on the Regulation of Amendment 64. A couple of things that I just want to point out to you from my experience with Task Force and just ongoing work that's happening at state level. We hear a lot, you know, in regards to what choices we're going to make about banning or not banning, that we need to wait on the state and see what comes down from the state. We had a very short deadline, as you well know, less than 90 days, to try to put regulations in place. We broke up into work groups, we were assigned various tasks, and the one thing that I can tell you that we found across the board was that this was incredibly daunting and we did not have enough time. So we rushed to try to get things in place as much as we could. We tried to hit the things that would be most important to our communities, also recognizing that in the writing of Amendment 64, local jurisdictions were given the right to choose to ban or not to ban. That does not come from anyone who is against that amendment initially, it came from the authors of that amendment. So I want to make sure that we remember that, but also to understand that this thing was, it had to happen so quickly, that now what we're left with is a set of proposals by which the Department of Revenue has less than 33 days to make the final rules on over 66 broad topics that engender much detail that we don't have. I have a list here of just what those topics cover on the broad strokes, and there's four pages. And when I say 33 days, the deadline is July 1st, so I'm giving them the benefit of working every single weekend from here until July 1st. So I think it's actually impossible that we will receive instructions from the state that will give us the detail that we need to put in place. So that's a concern. The other issue is that according to an economic study, in the Taxation Work Group, we keep hearing about the revenue, the revenue, the revenue. We had an independent study by Colorado State University, the Colorado Future Study. This was an independent, unbiased study of how we would come up with the economics. And I sent an article around on the major outcomes to the Associated Press. the policies in place. But I'd like for you to consider that. Thank you.
Ashley Knudsen?
Hello. Uh, my name is Ashley Knudsen, and I am a taxpaying citizen of Colorado Springs and a mother of two boys ages eight and twelve. I'm also the owner of the Herb Shop, which is a local medical marijuana center and it's third year of business. I currently employ six people. I am writing in regards to Amendment 64 and its impact on our community. I seek to express my view as a business owner, mother, and citizen of Colorado Springs. The city of Colorado Springs has been tasked with the choice of whether to allow or whether or not to allow retail cannabis stores. With this decision, you will determine the fate of legitimate small business as well as the black market. I invite you to consider that you will empower one and weaken the other. Should you say no to retail stores, you will be by default saying yes to the black market and underground behind-the-scenes sales of marijuana. On the other hand, if you say yes to retail stores, you will increase sales tax income for the city, decrease underage access, and create new jobs in Colorado Springs. Since Amendment 64 was signed into law, Craigslist and other websites have been booming with the exchange of marijuana from home growers to customers for a donation. So the loophole has already been discovered. Thousands and thousands of dollars are being exchanged without tax and without the oversight of regulation. Home growers are growing marijuana in massive amounts and redistributing their yields for cash. Entire houses are being turned into grow facilities that are not being inspected or regulated by the building department or fire department for safety. My business has spent over a hundred thousand dollars on our grow facility. The majority of that money went to licensed contractors, plumbers, electricians, and electricians who pulled the necessary permits and went through the building department's process to ensure safety and code standards. By saying yes to retail centers, you will be saying no to home growers and black market sales. By saying yes to retail centers, you will be saying no to untaxed, unregulated sales of marijuana and yes to increased city sales tax revenues and safer sales of cannabis. After having cannabis sales take place out of sight, or let's see, having cannabis sales take place out of sight on the black market does not benefit our community or make it any safer. I believe the medical marijuana industry in Colorado Springs has set the standard for transparency, accountability, and responsibility. We have given the community a safe way of accessing this medicinal plant and given back to the community through our tax sales. We have decreased the unemployment rate by hiring new employees and providing work for contractors, plumbers, and electricians. So what I'm asking for is this, please regulate and tax this new industry. Please give existing medical marijuana centers the opportunity to transition into retail operations if they choose. And thank you.
Gina Haines?
Hello, council members. Thank you very much for letting me talk to you today. My name is Gina Haines. I actually work at a dispensary. I am one of those almost mature adults that we spoke about earlier, and I've been given an opportunity for a job in that industry, and it allows me to help others on a daily basis. I'd love for any of you to come out and see who we are helping. It's other mature adults as well. I have talked to people who have moved here from other states because they are allowed to use it legally and they feel better about being able to do that. I did not vote for Amendment 64. I don't think we were ready for it, but the people have spoken and they said that they want it. And I think that as adults, we're all responsible for everything that we do, whether we're eighteen, fifty-one, eighty-six, whatever, whatever we do, we're responsible for. So I am here today to ask you that, to consider that if you do allow recreational, that you allow the existing dispensaries to be the ones to regulate it and implement it initially. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jill Russell?
One, I'm asking at this time if it would be agreeable to both sides of this issue. We are going to have a focus of the majority of the business community, not the entire business community, but the majority of our business community. Nearly half of our regional economy consists of economic drivers in aerospace and defense, about nine billion dollars just in the aerospace and defense industry, tourism, one point three billion dollars, and our national and international nonprofit organizations, which generate about three billion dollars of revenue here within our regional economy. Now, the feedback that we've received from the leaders of the organizations in these sectors is that they are very troubled with the impacts of easily accessible and openly marketed marijuana will have on their sectors, not only their employees, but the business that they do here within the region and beyond. Particularly important to note that the significant and serious concerns that our Department of Defense has raised here today has serious ramifications on the military population, and they covered that, but also on contractors to those installations. We think that with the talk of BRAC, as one of the generals mentioned, and other decisions that are being made at a national level, we don't want any opportunity for those at the Pentagon and those in other locations around the country to point to our region as a place that makes it more difficult for our military to do their job for our nation and for the globe. Now, immediately following the Amendment 64 vote, the Business Alliance, our office, received several calls from businesses that we were working with out of state who were looking at expansions here within Colorado Springs, and they were very concerned about the legalization of recreational marijuana and the impacts that it would have on what they believed is the most important asset to them, and that was their workforce. We're very concerned with the signal we are sending to our youth by allowing for the retail sale of recreational marijuana. You heard from Joe McGuire, a little while ago, from Conspire. They're headquartered here. They have operations around the country, and I really, if you don't know, they're really at the forefront of education, educating the population on the dramatic impacts and the increases of drug use here in our region and across the state since the passage of medicinal marijuana, let alone the recent passage of Amendment 64 and what that means and will mean to our region. So I wanted to make those issues very upfront and hot center for all of you to understand the position that we're coming from as a organization. And lastly, I've been doing business development around the country for twenty years, and I can tell you that the most important issue for any company when they're making a decision on wanting to expand and grow the business, grow their business here, stay here, locate here, is the availability, affordability, and capability of their workforce. It's that simple. And for them to have concerns, which we've heard time and again from companies, about what the passage of Amendment 64 will mean, what the legalization of recreational marijuana will mean at the local level, is very concerning to my board and the business community. And so with those primary examples that I want to make sure we put in front of you today, and we will work hard to continue this message to you and the council and the other cities in the region. So thank you very much.
So, sir, do you want to kind of identify yourself? Paul, just to remind everybody that the public hearing will be on June 27th, and the fourth of the work session will be on July 8th. And the first time the board will take action on this particular issue is July 23rd.
Good afternoon, council members, and thank you for allowing me to testify. Now, try to make as brief as possible. My name is Paul Satella, and I've worked in Colorado for about thirty years. First, I want to give all the council members a letter. I have written both to the mayor, the Gazette, and Andy Block, Pearl, MMJ, this paper here. As I noted from my search, I performed on May 13th. The city attorney stated his position and a working group was formed, the members or council members of Graywood and Martin. Let me read this letter to you. This is from me to Mayor Bach. I apologize for the MMJ community that chose to attack the character of Mayor Bach. Was embarrassed to see the Andy Block responses that did not focus on the A-64 issue, but rather attacking the mayor. Back where I come from, you get more accomplished with sugar than vinegar. Please do not judge our community as being uneducated, but rather have patience with us. The true and right choices are only made by educated and informed public. You have my permission to reprint this. I have read all the documents above, and I find a majority of this attacking the mayor's position and using suspect personal life issues that are unconfirmed as a basis for throwing rocks at his position against recreational marijuana. It seems shallow and not addressed specifics of A-64 and its impact on the local economy rather than Mayor Bach's comments. Medical marijuana is alive and well in the Springs, like I stated last meeting. And although it would be beneficial in my business interest to support its passions, I choose not to. I believe that we have enough dispensaries in Colorado Springs, and increasing the number of recreational marijuana centers to be operated after the grace period, medical marijuana owners to apply for a duplicative cost for a sister operation such as American recreational marijuana is totally mind-boggling. We have doctors for medical marijuana referrals for those that pass the litmus test, excuse me. We have a group of dispensary owners as well that follow the rules and actually have patient care in mind. I believe we have, we can take two views on this and let the popular vote of Colorado Springs prevail after a public vote. And like I had voiced before, let Denver have A-64, and we can watch the impact from here. Then, in all event, can we make an educated and informed decision. They could be the business model that will reflect in time the benefits of A-64 to us, and then we could choose either remain on the MMJ regulatory framework with the one-hundred-plus dispensaries that demand, deserve, and should be allowed, what we call the grandfather clause. So we don't get the supply and demand change out of bounds and allow the biggest money such as Denver interests in A-64 depriving these people out of business economically, and I'm referring to the owners now.
Paul, we didn't think we could finish reading that, so if you want to.
I would like to close this. I have made my point, but I would like to also honor the good generals for their time and service, especially Mr. Westwood Clark, who I am a disabled veteran. Service connect is one hundred percent. I thank you for your service.
Brian, you want to?
Good afternoon, members of city council and mayor. I am Brian Burnett. I'm the senior executive vice chancellor for administration and finance at the University of Colorado, Colorado Springs, and I'm here on behalf of Chancellor Shockley, Zalba, and UCCS to speak with you about the university's position with respect to the city's implementation plan of Amendment 64. This is my first opportunity to testify to council since the April election, and would like to welcome the new council members and look forward to working with you as we grow and continue to develop the only state public research university south of the Denver metro area. As many of you know, from humble beginnings in 1965, UCCS is now the fastest-growing university in Colorado and one of the fastest-growing in the western United States. We are rapidly becoming a primary job creator. We're adding over forty jobs this year as we get ready to welcome a record ten thousand students to our campus this fall. On top of our three hundred million dollar economic impact, we have, we will have a hundred and fifty million in construction underway, much of it without state support over the next two years. So from an economic perspective, UCCS continues to grow, serve this community and region, and become an economic force of its own. Last fall, our regions, our elected board of regions, did not think that the addition of legalized recreational marijuana was in the best interest of any of the campuses of the University of Colorado, and they took a public position against Amendment 64. Now, I'll grant you, the university is a place where we should and do celebrate divergent opinions and thoughts. That is what a university should be. But let me be clear, UCCS and CU are still bound by the Drug-Free Workplace Act of 1988. And with that, each year comes over eighty million dollars with strings attached from the federal government to help our students go to school, whether it's Pell Grants, federally-assisted student loans for the grants and contracts our faculty continue to compete for and win, which brings economic value to the city. So as you think about the message we try to give, is we grow our out-of-state enrollment and bring that money into our economy. It's a very, it's becoming a tougher message, in our opinion, when we talk to parents in California and parents in Texas and parents in Illinois about the availability of recreational marijuana. So we would just ask you, city council, and we know that this is coming, to consider all of the economic, maybe the misopportunities or disadvantages that come from this, and we would urge you to consider banning the sale within the city of Colorado Springs. We don't think anything that could jeopardize the Colorado Springs economy is in the best interest of UCCS, and this campus works to serve over a thousand military dependents and veterans each year with quality post-secondary experiences. And anything that would jeopardize that piece of our economy is obviously not good for UCCS. So I would just urge you, on behalf of Chancellor Shockley, Zalba, and the regions, to think very carefully about the effects of legalizing the sale of recreational marijuana, and we would urge you to ban the sale when that time comes. Thank you.
Mark, you want to go?
Good afternoon, President King, honorable city council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I know we're running up on time. We've heard quite a bit of opposition today, and we anticipated that, given recent media around this issue. It's going to be a heck of an issue for you guys to tackle over the next month. Just wanted to come forward and talk a little bit about some misnomers that are existing out there, some marijuana myths versus facts, if you will. One of the big issues is this idea that somehow we're going to get rid of the sale of marijuana. I'd like to just show you, this is the first page on Craigslist when you type in marijuana, and you get, "Get free top-shelf weed, take your legal stuff, adults for Amendment 64 compliant." All of this is cannabis trade. It's all happening already. The supply and demand for marijuana hasn't gone anywhere in ten thousand years. And in fact, it's evolved to Craigslist. This is what happens when you click on one of those links, is they're selling art and three brands that come attached to it. So the reality is, is that you're looking at a situation that isn't going away by just putting a ban in place on retail sales, because the reality is you have a legal substance now. So the question is, if you didn't have a legal access point for legal substance, let's say liquor, for example, because it was three times invalid language to regulate like alcohol, we all didn't have liquor stores. When we enjoy beer and wine, wouldn't we pretty be producing much more of it at home and distributing it to our friends? The idea is you need to have commercial facilities that are regionally building-approved. Otherwise, you propagate people growing this in the neighborhoods next door to you. You propagate them distributing it on the black market, which doesn't care about checking IDs. And the military is all about controls. I appreciate Veterans Day, I appreciate what you guys have done for our country to give us the right to redress our government grievances under the First Amendment, to give us the right to free speech, to petition, to campaign, and get our vote out. And we've done that. And in this situation, we have an opportunity here to get rid of this black market, to get rid of these Craigslist ads, by allowing a safe place for the majority of citizens to access this. And with controls that the military has in place on blacklist-ing bars, for example, with the controls they have in place with the UCMJ, and the fact that they can article people out of the military if need be, joint testing policies haven't changed. Conspire is going to continue having people pee in a cup. Nothing's changing there. Employers have their rights protected, so regional business can set their own policies. Nothing's changed that. What we're talking about here, away from those concerns, is how do we best control it as a city? Because that is out of control. And we have no way to tax that. We have no way to regulate that. And the actual consequences of a prohibited black market are gang violence, are harder drugs being more accessible to. putting a ban in place on retail sales, because the reality is you have a legal substance now. So the question is, if you didn't have a legal access point for legal substance, let's say liquor, for example, because it was three times invalid language to regulate like alcohol, we all didn't have liquor stores. When we enjoy beer and wine, wouldn't we be producing much more of it at home and distributing it to our friends? The idea is you need to have commercial facilities that are regionally building-approved. Otherwise, you propagate people growing this in the neighborhoods next door to you. You propagate them distributing it on the black market, which doesn't care about checking IDs. And the military is all about controls. I appreciate Veterans Day, I appreciate what you guys have done for our country to give us the right to redress our government grievances under the First Amendment, to give us the right to free speech, to petition, to campaign, and get our vote out. And we've done that. And in this situation, we have an opportunity here to get rid of this black market, to get rid of these Craigslist ads, by allowing a safe place for the majority of citizens to access this. And with controls that the military has in place on blacklisting bars, for example, with the controls they have in place with the UCMJ, and the fact that they can article people out of the military if need be, joint testing policies haven't changed. Conspire is going to continue having people pee in a cup. Nothing's changing there. Employers have their rights protected, so regional business can set their own policies. Nothing's changed that. What we're talking about here, away from those concerns, is how do we best control it as a city? Because that is out of control. And we have no way to tax that. We have no way to regulate that. And the actual consequences of a prohibited black market are gang violence, are harder drugs being more accessible to children. The gateway effect is from prohibition. The fact that a drug dealer can sell heroin and methamphetamines on top of it. So we need to think about community safety here, not propagate a bunch of amateur growers in neighborhoods, but instead have a safe, commercially-regulated structure, and the heavy lifting's been done by the state. So I urge you to please look at this issue, realize how easy it is to convert the existing owners over, and do this the responsible way.
Good afternoon. My name is Tom Belger. I'm just a citizen. What has gone on said here today is, I don't know whether the governor's signed it yet or it's been signed in the next thirty minutes, but it's SB 250. And you can have the police chief come up here afterwards and double-check what I'm about to tell you. But in essence, when SB 250 gets signed, all the criminal regulations in the state of Colorado, reneging the marijuana, re-rid, it's a hundred-dollar fine after three-quarters of a pound. That covers street-level drug traffic. It's legal to have an ounce. If I do the sale in front of a police officer, it's a hundred-dollar misdemeanor. It's nothing you can do about. You have de facto legalization as soon as the governor signs that bill, which nullifies everything that everybody said. You need to put a moratorium in place on my application for your decision to have a deliberative process before coming to a conclusion on opting out. I came today hoping to find out how I could participate in that process. You appointed two committee members, or committee chairs, but what's the process for getting on that committee? I know, because when we wrestled with the Amendment 20 issue, we had a very deliberative process. It went on for months. It had to be broken down into working groups. And actually, it was our efforts that spurred the state to create 1284, because Denver had regulated, Colorado Springs was regulated, and the state was looking ineffective. You can't bury your head in the sand. That works for ostriches. It's universally fatal for human beings. And there are certain things that cannot be unwound, bells that cannot be unrung, and they're outside your hands. This is happening in Denver. The guys are seeing that the edicts of the state don't work quite so well at the local level, because this is where the rubber hits the road. You need more time. You don't need to regulate alcohol or marijuana like alcohol, regulate it like marijuana, because you already have that system in place. You have a process that will allow, it's already, that allows you to hit these mandated deadlines in Amendment 64. And a moratorium is probably going to be required as you wrestle through, but people that have sat on the test force have said what's stuff thrown on the wall. You know, sixty-six points, thirty-three days to legislate sixty-six specific points for rules and regulations. And I can tell you, based on 1370, 1380, SB 250, SB 283, Colorado Springs is going to have to come up with its own law. The silver lining in this cloud is that the community that figures this one out first has a ready market, national market. Rhode Island just legalized medical marijuana. Maryland has just legalized medical marijuana. It's twenty states and the District of Columbia. Marijuana has more support than equal rates of men than it had. Get out in front of it. Don't let it roll over you.
Is everybody through? Okay, we will close the public comment. And welcome Mayor Bach to the podium. It's good to have you here today. Thanks for coming, and we appreciate your presence.
President, Mr. President, pro temp, members of the council. We had understood that originally we were going to make a decision on Amendment 64 by June 30th, so I apologize for the length of comments today. We had thought they needed to be here, and now I understand you're not going to vote for the first time against July 23rd, so we have plenty of time for robust conversation. But I will offer some comments here today. First of all, to clarify, Amendment 64 has to do with recreational marijuana. As far as I know, it has nothing to do with medical marijuana. Secondly, Amendment 64 has an opt-out provision for local jurisdictions. In fact, El Paso County and Monument have already prohibited the commercial sales of recreational marijuana and the cultivation, manufacturing, and testing of recreational marijuana. So we are not the first to deal with this. El Paso County and Monument already weighed in. So what are the issues, really? I think there are three risks to the commercial sale of recreational marijuana. First is public health. Second is public safety. And third is jobs. On the public health side, someone earlier mentioned that I had made a comment that he purported was inaccurate. I want to just quote to you what the governor talked about, John Hickeliper, has said. In fact, when I leave here, I go back to my office, I'm going to email to you a link to Governor Hickeliper's interview with the Gazette editorial board on January 11th, right before he gave the State of the State remarks. Governor Hickeliper, in the Denver Post on September 29th of last year, excuse me, 23rd of last year, said, quote, "Repeated pot smoking does affect adolescents' ability to hold on to information." If that's true, and that seems to be a pretty factual basis, what kind of leaders are we if we tell them that that's okay? Then when the governor was here on January 11th in that interview with Gazette, he said specifically that adolescents in the fourteen-to-sixteen-year-old category who regularly use this new grade of marijuana that's out there are at risk of permanently impaired memory. I had said losing memory. I meant what he meant, which is apparently, young people who use this new grade of marijuana regularly are at risk of permanently impaired memory. That is very serious. Lastly, the governor and the Congress saw on March 28th of this year, during a speech while in Canada to discuss the Keystone and Exeter pipeline, said, quote, "When it comes to modern, high-octane pot, some scientists believe it impairs long-term memory when consumed exclusively by younger teens. Your memory is such a huge part of your existence, so we have to make sure we regulate it very tightly and keep it out of the hands of kids." Well, you'll have plenty of, I'm sure, testimony and debate on the public health, so that's tomorrow, and governor. On the public safety side, I know that Police Chief Pete Carey and Interim Fire Chief Tommy Smith, in the future, are probably through June 27th, caring if that be appropriate, will make comments to you from their perspective on what this means in terms of increased public safety. Their testimony is very serious. Chief Carey's testimony to expect the increase in automobile vehicular accidents, of personal injury, property damage, deaths, and more crime. It's hardly storms around that quantitatively, but they're very concerned. Lastly, jobs. You know, I spend a lot of my time traveling around our city, visiting our primary employers. Those companies generate half or more of their revenue outside of our metropolitan statistical average. The reason for that, why that's important, is because you know that when they bring revenue to our community, they're adding to our community wealth, and there's a job multiplier effect. So we call them primary employers. And I hope you'll take some time here before you vote to contact your primary employers yourselves, as I have done. And I'm here to tell you today, I have a continual parade of comments coming to me from primary employers, both civilian and military commanders, as I have done, and certainly the CPOs of our major civilian private sector companies. So this is a very tough issue. This does not change the right of people who are of age to use recreational marijuana. That is a state law, although it violates several lots of state law. What you would be doing by opting out of Amendment 64 would be joining El Paso County and Monument, and perhaps other jurisdictions soon, and banning the commercial sales of recreational marijuana, the cultivation, manufacturing, and testing of recreational marijuana in our city. I'm just going to tell you this: It is essential that we send a message to our primary employers that we're not going to allow this, most critically, the military. You can find that out yourselves here between now and when you vote. Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, it's about five to three. Why don't we take a six-minute break, and we'll come back and go-